Clay's working on the southern part of the state. I don't know what time he's gonna get here. We'll get started. We'll call a meeting in order. You guys know what's at the top? We call a meeting in order for the Blue House Select Board December ninth meeting. First item is to set the agenda. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, there's a laminated paper on the, uh, Christmas tree there. If anybody new here that wants to read it, tell us how the meetings are running. If anybody's interested. Any select board announcements?
No, ma'am.
Any, uh, public announcements?
Oh. Petitions are available on my office. If anybody wants one. I just put it out there. Cody, you were the first one in, so.
Is anybody here?
No.
Fast call.
No, or, or Marytown.
Okay, there's no fast call in Marytown. Information. Commissions, committees, trustees, and other board announcements? Okay. Approval warrants, uh, one of those is mine, so I don't remember which one it was.
It's twenty-six.
Just leave that out for now until
Yeah.
See what happens. The other, the other two can sign it again. We can't, we can't vote on it. Till Clay gets here. We could go back to that afterwards, uh. This, uh, SBE, which do you say it was, twenty-six?
Yep, twenty-six.
So we have to leave SBE twenty-six out for now. Twenty-six. Okay, so we need a motion on, uh, warrants, SBE, two-two, one-one, two-three, two-four, two-five. A motion on that?
Make a motion, wait a second. Second it.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to say, uh, congratulations to Jason Ball for becoming captain. I saw that on Facebook. That's, uh, two-two, one-two-four. I see letters. That's what the purchase is. Call me shit for him.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have payroll warrants. Eleven-seventeen and twelve-eleven. A motion on that?
Make a motion. Second it.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I got approval of the select board minutes for eleven-fourteen and twelve-two. A motion on that?
Big motion, has ready? Second it.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good. Let's save the town manager report, Jackie.
Okay, delinquent taxes as of today are two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-ninety-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Water's at twenty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. Sewer's at thirty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-one dollars and seventy-nine cents. Hillside underwater and sewer, hillside terrace, water and sewer line projects are being started this week. Um, and that was funded with ARCA money. I'm waiting on the easements, um, from Nick Lowe. The map, um, was completed showing easements, and he's drafting those up for everybody to sign. Under highway, guardrails are, have been installed at the Gilbert Road, Major Culbert and the South Hill. Major Culbert, um, still pending on Maglin, Menard, Falls Bridge, Baptist, and South Hill. Um, and the guardrail company said it would be two to three weeks before they were back to finish those projects. FEMA, December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three flood. We only have, uh, the one Chelsea Road slide repair, which has started this week. And that'll be done in three weeks? Two to three weeks?
Depends on Mother Nature.
Yeah. She's not being very happy tonight.
I don't believe it though is done, but.
Yeah, so that one will be done by the end of the month. So that will close out the December flood. As I stated at the last, uh, select board meeting, the July flood has been completely closed out. I've finished all of the final paperwork. I'm just waiting for the, uh, final payments to come in on the increase from seventy-five to ninety percent, um, funding, and then the CATC, which is the admin, um, cost. The July twenty-two, uh, let's see, the July twenty-twenty-four, everything is completed except for Granville, and that should be done in the next couple of weeks. And then I can close out that one. So that will close out all of the, the, uh, FEMA. I did, uh, you had asked me to reach out to Windsor County and Barrytown in regards to policing. We did get the proposal, a proposal from Windsor County along with the ones from Orange County. Barrytown does not have the staffing, um, to submit a proposal to take over policing here. But we'll discuss more with George Contos when I call him in a little bit. Back to delinquent taxes and water and sewer legislature. I have a sixteen-page new law from the legislature where I cannot, um, tax sale anybody unless they're a year or more delinquent. So anybody that went delinquent in November of this year, I cannot even start tax sale proceedings until they're delinquent a full year. So this new legislature, basically what it's gonna do, it's gonna force towns to have to borrow money in lieu of taxes because I can't, I can't collect anymore. I usually have, I call in my repeat offenders. There's multiple people that go delinquent every year. And I would put them up for tax sale, and that would basically force them to, to pay. And now I can't do that. Hopefully with, with the changes in Montpelier, we might be able to get that reversed or, um, rectified this year because it's not, it's, it's gonna hurt the towns. It's gonna hurt the taxpayers because everybody that's paying theirs on time. Now, the ones that aren't, which are roughly just under a quarter of a million dollars in delinquents sitting there, but I can't do anything. There's only like fifty thousand that I can tax sale that, um, are a year or more. And with the new rules, you have to, you have to post a notice on the, the property, a legal notice. You have to send out the, the regular, um, notices to the mortgage companies. Any lien holders and the property owner. You have to send it out in five different languages. And you have to remind them if it does show the tax sale that their redemption period is coming up. You have to notify them within ninety to a hundred and twenty days. So, like I said, there's a sixteen-page change in the state statutes on tax sales. I had a long conversation with our tax sale attorney today. And right now my hands are tied on anything that went delinquent in November. So.
There is.
That's where we stand with that.
And when?
Much to your grace period.
Basically.
And when the new person, if they don't pay, I'm assuming the person that would want the property has to pay the taxes back to get that property? Is that something that happens or it's just gone?
So there's a redemption period. They have a year and a day to redeem the property. That didn't change.
Yeah.
If they don't redeem it within the year and a day, then a tax sale deed is issued to the person that purchased it at the tax sale.
Okay.
And then they take possession of the property. But if you, if you came, say, at a tax sale tomorrow, and you came and you bid on a property, you can't step foot on it. You can't touch that property for that year and a day.
Yeah. But when that, when that person gets it, do they have to pay the taxes that are owed?
Yes.
Okay, anybody have anything for Jackie? Okay, we got one more warrant that we could do because it's Paul's bike company, so.
Okay.
Here you go.
Okay, so we have an order for Hebert Excavating, um, for Chelsea Road and for the concrete blocks for Granville Road, um, for fifty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. Larry cannot do it, so do I have a?
Make a motion, wait a second.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. We're good.
My question is.
Second there already, alright.
Do you have a new visit? Where's that?
Hey, George, it's Jackie. Good, I'm gonna put you on speaker. Alright. Can you hear me?
I can hear you well, thank you.
Can everybody hear him?
Everybody else have it?
Okay. There you go.
Uh, George? How you doing?
Yeah, how are you?
How you like the sunny Arizona weather?
Alright, it's, it's just about, uh, sunset. It's, uh, seventy-two still.
Smart person.
It's been eighty for the last, ever since I got here. It's been, I haven't seen a cloud. It's that way. With just Larry?
Yeah.
Ah, I just kind of recognize your wind there.
Okay, we.
You're not doing so well over there, I understand.
Uh, no, it's like freezing rain, ice and snow, you know, usual Vermont weather.
Yeah, well, I saw one tomorrow, so I hope it's not too bad.
Okay, um, actually, the person ahead, most questions not here tonight, but, uh, I think, uh, in general, four standing questions. About a year ago, you came in before us and told us, you know, you were trying to save the department over there. We were wondering how things are going and what your plans are for the future and stuff. If you could update us on that.
Well, you know, I can tell you that Larry, we've been doing really good. Uh, of course, summertime is, is a time when we had lots of work. Uh, we had, uh, actually, we had three vehicles, uh, two on one interstate and one on another. And so, uh, we, we made most of our income just during the summer months. And so we were, we were really good this summer. And, you know, we had not great things that happened to us this year. Uh, and we're still kind of, we still want to have more people, obviously. But, uh, we were able to, um, get Burlington Communications overboard. We spent, uh, well, we set up a hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars for our radio system, which we really needed. Places like Stratford and even current, like, East Orange and places like that. And we, we simply can't get in there with our current radio system. So we've, we're replacing a ton of stuff naturally starting tomorrow, but, uh, tomorrow here in Granville. So that's, that's a, you know, that's a really great thing for us because it's, it's not only a safety issue, but it's, it's just, just being able to contact our people where they are. We're really pleased with that. And we're also working with Berry City right now. I'm waiting to hear from the council. We're trying to extend our hours of communication with them because, of course, with the system we have now, uh, we only have communications in, uh, from eight o'clock in the morning to four in the afternoon. And from four to six, we negotiated in the past with Berry City, uh, for, uh, telephone use. In other words, if somebody wants to run a, a criminal record checker, a car vehicle checker, uh, making a radio stop, he uses his telephone to Berry City. So we're trying to extend that from six o'clock to ten o'clock because we have people that are, that are interested in working, uh, on the night, on the night shift, doing a night tour. So I hadn't heard from the council yet. Chief Sale and I are, um, are kind of working on that. So that's, that's kind of important for us because, you know, you're not aware. Last year was only, almost a hundred-and-forty, a hundred-and-forty people were killed. Last year, police officers were killed. And, you know, for me to have a police officer out in an area where we can't communicate to them, that's a great liability for me and obviously for the officer too, so. I'm pretty cognizant of that. So anyways, Larry, I think we've, we've really come a long way. And I have people that are waiting in line. I have at least two people that are waiting in line to, to jump in. Of course, they would be, uh, you know, part-time, but they would help us with our civil stuff. And they would, they would, they would be able to help us do contract work like on the interstate and stuff like that, so. You know, we've, you know, despite our vehicle problems, which, which we're trying to resolve at the moment, they're doing pretty good. I'm thinking of, uh, actually, uh, leasing one by spring. And getting, getting rid of one, one of the older Durangoes that's been a problem for us, so. We're trying to manage what, what monies we have and what vehicles we have. And we're doing, we're, we're actually quite happy. Quite happy. I don't know if you have any specific questions about that, but, I'd say we're doing pretty good. I'm very pleased with it.
Okay, Walter, turn it over to. Anybody has any questions? Did you have a, Tyler, or?
I don't want to say when I said it. Hi, it's Tyler Mitchell. We met earlier this year. I think one of the questions that Chris, if my name is correct here, was wondering, and I'm just looking at, um, what's the, what's this sheriff's, sorry, uh, Windsor County. How many, just looking at there, if you could just kind of compare, how many full, part, full and part-time sheriffs do you have right now in Orange County?
Uh, we have one, two, three. We have three and, and one that is available to us. He lives out in Corinth. Uh, and I, I can't compete with the number of people that Palmer has. I mean, Palmer has, he must have, last time I heard, he had around twenty, around twenty people. But he, he would experience the same problems that, uh, anybody would being that distance away. Their main office is out of Woodstock. So imagine trying to have officers from that area traveling up into, uh, you know, Wiggins Town. It's just, for radios, it's impossible. You would have to, you would have to contract with, uh, somebody else's radio system. Either Berry City or Roger American up in Morrisville. He transmits off, I think, Mount Mansfield. So it's, uh, you know, you know, I don't, I don't think we have the possibility of doing anything out there, up in your area. I know we have difficulty in Chelsea. And, uh, I know that, in fact, the deputies are, they have a difficult time, you know, transmitting. They're, they're using, I think it's Mount Holly, uh, for their, for their transmissions. And, and, uh, he has to go halfway up Washington Heights to be able to hit Mount Holly. It's really, it's, it's miserable type, even in Chelsea. And I don't know how they're able to convince the, um, people that are in charge over there that he could do it. I don't know, does that answer anything?
Yeah, I think so. And then looking at their, this, I'm just looking at their form two. What level of certification are the officers that you have? I'm assuming what?
They're all three.
They're all three, and that's the?
The ones I was talking about are, they're capable of doing anything.
Okay, so that's, okay.
Fullback included.
Okay. And the two, you said there's two interested in joining Orange County, and are those level three officers?
Yes, yes. I've got one that's waiting right now. He's, he's over in, uh, he's working with St. John'sbury. And as soon as we can verify contracts, uh, then I'll, I'll take him on full-time. But I, I, I don't want to bang sight him and, uh, get him down into our area and then find out that, uh, you know, we don't have a contract that's, you know, out there for us. Because as you know, without contracts, I can't pay, I can't pay the officers. That's the only, the only source of income that I have is through, uh, contracts. That's it. The only source, resource for, uh, for paying for the deputies. I've got to be, I've got to think about them and their families as well. I just, I can't bring them out and then not have, not have the, uh, the job for them. So that's what we're trying to wait to hear.
Okay. No sad though?
I was gonna say one more, just to kind of follow up on that question. What is your plan to hire more officers? Like you just said, the contract, you want to make sure that, you know, I worked for Burlington Fire for many years, and I remember when I was very early in my career, the mayor had, I think, overspent sixty million dollars illegally. And, uh, they were wondering if the fire department was gonna lose people because they weren't sure if the city was gonna be able to afford it. So what type of funds are you going, you know, how are you trying to build and grow the departments? I think that's what most people are concerned about is, you know, when you prob, you can probably tell me how many sheriffs Orange County had when you first became sheriff versus right now you have three to four with hopefully another two to make six. Like, what's your plan to grow the agency, though, so that, you know, we can have officers out protecting us, you know, in Williamstown and, you know, Orange County in general?
Well, you know, I'm sure you're aware that the VSD is your primary source of the tourism.
Yep, I have heard that, but I believe they only have two officers, correct, and out of, uh, God, I can't burl them, trying to think of.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be surprised. I know they, they're having a great deal of difficulty too.
Yeah.
But I have to be careful, careful to grow. I can't grow too quickly. For instance, uh, you know, we, we made a considerable amount of money with two construction companies this year on the interstate. And so, you know, we're, we're pretty flush at the moment. But I don't know what's gonna be coming this spring. I, I know that they're gonna be doing interstate work on eighty-nine. And I also know that Washington County, uh, has difficulty trying to fill, kind of fill those slots because there's a lot of work and he too doesn't have a lot of deputies. So, you know, I, I, I just, I don't want to grow too quickly. I don't want to run out and lease, uh, a whole bunch of vehicles, buy a whole bunch of vehicles and totally, totally use my, I call my war chest, that money that's available to us. And that's been done by other people in other departments. They're suffering right now, Mike. I'm not suffering right now, and I don't want to suffer. So I'm careful, how I grow. I, I would like to grow, but, uh, it, it depends on contracts. I'm interested in getting Chelsea back. And I think I can get Chelsea back. And I'm interested in, in, um, Stratford and, and, you know, over in that area where we don't have Corinth anymore. I'd like to get Corinth back. But as I said, I've got a guy right there in Corinth. But I, I, I don't want to jump in until I know that either we're gonna get a contractor or not. So I'm, I'm cautious. I'm not, I'm not gonna, uh, you know, risk anybody's, uh, you know, income to their family or anything. So that's, that's where we sit. That's where we sit. I, I, I think we're quite comfortable and we're gonna be comfortable, um, with what monies we have right now clear through to spring easily. And then with, with what we, you know, will have this summer, I'm hoping we'll have plenty of contracts again this summer. And, you know, perhaps we could buy another car or lease another car or whatever the case may be. But like I said, I just spent a hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars to go like to communications work, uh, new repeaters trying to reach down into Stratford and down in that area and, uh, enhance our, our ability to get down, even into Williamstown. So we're doing fine. We're doing just fine.
Anyone in the audience have any questions? Mike?
I got just two questions.
You don't have to speak up, right?
I got two questions. The first one, I don't mean any disrespect. He's a great guy, but other than a handshake and a wave, what are we getting for seventy thousand dollars for now?
Well, I, I can tell you that, uh, I had personally talked to the officer or officers that work in the Williamstown area. And I told them right out that whatever they do, uh, that they have to be concerned with the community. I don't want them writing a whole bunch of expensive traffic tickets on the Williamstown Chelsea Road. I want that. I'd rather, if they're gonna be stopping people, I'd rather than stop, talk with them, they can write them a, a, a ticket if they want. But I would suggest that you write just a, um, you know, a, a freebie, so to speak. In order to have community relations, I don't, I don't want to be writing a whole mass of tickets and try to fund my department based on traffic tickets. Getting money back from the town, that's ridiculous. So, yes, yes, he does do a lot of, a lot of handshaking and a lot of that, and he's been told to do that. So, uh, I guess that issue would be willing. But, you know, I worked for the state police for almost thirty years. And, you know, I learned that you catch a lot more with honey. And I, it's working well for me, and I'm sure it's working well for Williamstown. I have people that call all the time that are, that are absolutely delighted, elated that, that, you know, he stopped in to a bar or he stopped into a store or he just met somebody at the gas box. And they take the time to call up and say, hey, this is really nice. I appreciate that. No one's ever did this in the past. And that's, that's what I strive for, you know, a community that likes us to be there. I don't want someone out there terrorizing the community because they're going down the hill from Chelsea down to Williamstown and that thirty-five mile an hour road.
I guess I should have been more clear. I, I was talking more about, you know, we've had several cars stolen lately. Dollar General got robbed, like. I never saw an Orange County sheriff in any of those, like. We're paying for.
I can't, I can't speak to that because I don't, I don't know what, you know, what these circumstances are. Was it after four o'clock? Was it before eight o'clock? You know, all these sorts of things. But the people, you know, call SP and SP take the case without us even knowing that. I, you know, I, unless I've got, uh, you know, what we call ValCorps right in front of me, it's hard for me to answer that. I, I, I don't know. But I can assure you that, that there's a stolen car and they, they call us, we're going to have that immediately. The ValCorps may be investigating that. That's not, that's not, nothing we're gonna pass off on anybody. We all do what we're, what we're, you know, able to do. Obviously, you know, we would have access in lab or, you know, that sort of thing if we have a real serious crime. But, you know, if we have something that's really serious, we would call the state. They have the capability, they have the time, they have the officers. For us to get involved in a case like that, I mean, it could take hours, hours and hours and hours. And that would come off the contract. So that wouldn't be very good as far as, as, you know, your, your money being spent. Uh, or even in a, a court hearing like the homicide we had over in Brookfield. I mean, there were, there was days where the officer was in court. And so that would, that would eat up, eat up all our contract money without, you know, for, for a single case. So we have to be cautious from what we, what we do have. Does that help you at all with that answer?
Not really. Um, is our contract with Orange County from seven to four, or is it like an open contract?
It's, it's from eight o'clock to four o'clock each day. However, however, we do have, the officer that you're talking about does go out and he does work in between from time to time. And I'm, I'm not gonna eat. He doesn't do any service, I'm talking about civil service, after eight o'clock. So he wouldn't be doing that if you saw that at nine o'clock at night. You'd be off patrol.
Alright, see you now. And like I said, I don't mean anything negative to your eyes. I just, if I don't see what, what they're offering us.
And it's something you also have to notice, we, we do have, uh, at least two home-made vehicles that are floating around. So. And one of the reasons for that is I, I just haven't really got around to sticking it all up. I just didn't have the money, you know, to do that. I'd, I'd rather spend my money elsewhere. I have more cars, but, um, I'm, like I said, I'm cautious about how I spend my money. I, I'm running a business. And if you're a businessman, you know that you have to be cautious how you spend it. Because the sheriff's department is a business.
Larry, my next question is for the whole board is if, and I, I don't mean any disrespect to George or anything with Orange County, I have no problem with it, but why are we spending money with a company that's barely staying afloat by the sounds, when we could have?
Well, I don't know who told you that we're just barely afloat. We weren't doing too good in the spring. That's because everybody abandoned shift way back when they started. And then it's hard to find anybody. Uh, you, you can look at what the state is paying for bonus pay, what Berlin is paying for bonus pay. You know, they're, they're paying several thousand dollars to get people to come to them. Well, I'm in the same predicament, except I, I don't have city funds or I don't have state funds to say, you know, five thousand dollars you sign on for five thousand bucks. I don't have that capability.
I, I believe he was addressing the board, so I'll let him ask that question again, George. So hang, hang tight for a minute.
So I, like I said, I mean no disrespect to George or Orange County, but I, I'm wondering if they can afford vinyl for their police cars, which, we all know vinyl's cheap compared to police cars. Then why are we sending them our, our contract when we can go with a company that's, you know, already established and isn't struggling to get by and can, I assume, offer twenty-four-hour service instead of eight to four?
offer twenty-four hour service instead of eight to four?
We, we've had the same type of service for several years now. Even back when I was on the board, it was about the same thing when I was previously on the board. So, it's been going on at that rate for probably close to ten years, I'd say.
But they were established back then?
Right. Just hear me out.
I'm listening.
Okay. We knew there was a bad situation going on there last year. The whole board knew it. And we wanted, we just made the decision as a board to work with George to try to help, let him have a chance to get things up and going again. He's done, he's, I know he's gone through a lot to get, to get this going. It sounds like he got it headed in the right direction, probably ain't quite where he wants to be just yet, but our contract is with him till July first anyway. So, this is just, this was an update here, a phone conversation to see how things are going from here going. And, uh, so I think-
Hello, Larry, can I say something there?
Yeah, go ahead.
When I, when I first started on, on the job, uh, I had barely enough money to make a payroll for the first week, the first week I was there. Since then, I mean, I, I had tons of bills, and I mean tons of bills, several thousands of dollars in bills. I've successfully paid every nickel that we owe to everybody. We don't owe the world a nickel right now. And like I said, we, we just, we just were able to spend a hundred and forty-three thousand bucks on, on radio equipment. So, I would, I would say that we're doing fifty dollar a day. And I'm not worried about my payroll, whereas other, other sheriffs I know personally are worried about their payroll.
Well, okay, anyone else have any questions for George or comments they'd like to make?
Um, is there a way, can we get like, over the past year, uh, you know, how many calls they've responded to? What types of calls? Just to get more information about what's actually being done in the town? Does that make sense? Like-
On the website, I have all of their monthly-
Oh, they do a monthly report?
Monthly reports.
Okay.
They put them, I used to print them out for the select board, but when Chris P. was on the board, he asked that we just, I just put them up on the, on the website. So, if you go, go into Orange County, you can see, you know, what roads they were patrolling on, you know, and what they did.
Okay.
Um, with that.
And Jackie, Jackie, have you ever been on that? I, I can tell you that, um, traffic tickets and stops are not indicative of exactly what's happening because, uh, for instance, uh, other sheriff's departments are involved with governor's highway safety, like, uh, safety belts and, uh-
Yes, we collect their ticket.
Other programs. And so, they have to make, uh, all kinds of stops continuously. And so, that would be included in ValCorps and would show that they're making a lot of stops, but there's stopping people with, 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 you know, a lot wider influence. Well, I shouldn't say without probable cause, but they're out there and their job is to stop as many cars as they can and check as many people, like, for safety belts or stuff like that. So, even, even ValCorps is not really an accurate example as to what we're doing versus any other department, because we're, we're not involved with governor's highway safety and I don't have enough people to, to do highway safety.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just asking because I, I don't think most people in town are worried so much about traffic stops. There's a lot of drug activity, uh, you heard there's break-ins, car thefts, so there's, there's some serious stuff going on. Um, I mean, I was just threatened the other day over at the ball field, uh, and I called VSP, it was later at night, but, um, I, I'm not gonna try and speak for everybody, but I know for myself, like, if, if we're paying seventy thousand dollars, but all we're seeing really is, and again, I love Russ, he's a great guy, uh, so this is no disrespect to him or you guys, but all we're seeing is somebody drive around and, and wave at people, which is great to, to have that community interaction, uh, but that's a lot of money. Just, like we said, you're a business person, so on a business standpoint, for the town, seventy thousand dollars to have somebody basically just interact with people is a lot of money. Uh, so, and I, so I just know for me, like, dealing with the kids and with the sports over at the field and finding needles and being threatened at the field, uh, you know, uh, it'd just be nice to see, I guess, I guess some result in, in kind of the more serious side of, oh, I know that they came, they saw this car, they picked up somebody, um, just, just seeing some more results on that side of the thing. I don't know if that makes sense, but-
Well, you know, we're, we're, we're really not equipped to handle the drug issue. The drug issue requires surveillance, requires hours, requires, uh, a ton of assets that we don't have. So, it's difficult for, I mean, I can't tell you that, I know we're, we're gonna be doing drug work. Obviously, if, if, if anybody stops somebody and they, they smell or see something that's something different, but, uh, you know, there's certain things that, certain departments are, are more, you went to do it with drugs for instance, with the state. Um, and I can tell you this, that, that they're very closed mouthed about drugs. If, if we, we send information to the library and they, they trip that over to the drugs people, we never hear anything. I never hear about, uh, a drug rush in Williamstown or in Washington or in Orange until that choice happened. They see it very close to their chest. We don't know, we don't, we don't know anything that happens, and it irritates the death out of me because there's nothing I can say or do about it. Uh, but the last big drug bust they had in, in Orange, I was running radar right there at the town clerk's office with the town clerk, he beat me and he said, what, what was going on with this drug raid? And no one had even bothered to, to give us a call. So, I guess they're dealing with drugs, I guess I would say. I know it's disappointing, but that's the way the state works. And I'm sure if you called them without a little signal over in the ballpark, I would, I would bet, I would bet my wager that they probably didn't, or suggested even if anybody to go, because it's pretty frequent. If, if you ask them, for instance, and you stop and do a verification for us, they'll tell you no, they can't do it, we haven't got enough people. But we do it in Orange County. We'll go out of their way to, to go over and take care of that. A little verification, and the, the state won't tell you, well, take it over to motor vehicle. So, you call motor vehicle, motor vehicle, since you can't operate it here without a registration. You can't get registered without an inspection. You can't get inspected, you know what I mean? It's like a cover group for everybody, but we try to resolve that with the community. So, you know, think about that a little bit. It's really the service that we provide.
So, if, if I have an issue, I go over to the field, there's a car there, stuff's going on, whatever, I can, I can call Orange County and-
Of course.
Okay. You get to actually-
If we have somebody, if we have somebody on, he'll be over there.
Okay.
I was like, Chris had a, it's a construction, uh, upon the, uh, on the Chelsea road just as it drops down in, and he just, he made a quick phone call, and I had, I had somebody over there within twenty minutes, and I myself was there within an hour while he was digging across the road. So, you know, that's, you, you call the state and ask them to do that for you and see what they say. And that's one of, one of the, the reasons why, uh, you know, we exist is that we're community testing.
Okay, is anyone else, Rodney?
So, we had it on, caught it on our camera, guy walking around our farm looking at vehicles at one-thirty in the morning. We have extreme traffic on Graham Road during the night, during the middle of the night. What are we as citizens supposed to do with these people? We're just supposed to wait for us to come and wave or, I mean, we really need some police protection around here, and some of eight to four is not doing it. People go out all the time, they're in town, a lot of this stuff is happening at night.
Well, we're, we do have, we do have night patrol from time to time, and, uh, I know Russ, for instance, is interested in working at nighttime, but I can't put him out there at nighttime because I don't have, I don't have a dispatching service to do that. And I don't have a dispatching service because Berry City, I mean, I have to contract with them for X number of hours, and I, and I contracted till, uh, six o'clock, and I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get till ten o'clock. If I got till ten o'clock, then, then we would be out there in the evening, but I can't put Russ or anybody else down, uh, if I don't have any radio communications. I mean, I just, it's, it's, I can't do that. I, I won't do that, I won't risk it.
I know you have several, three different proposals for different amount of hours and stuff, right?
Right, right.
So, maybe we'll have to discuss if we, if we want more, might want more, we'll have to pay more, you know?
That's something for you guys to chew at. Uh, I'm, I'm glad to come to any of your meetings. I'm always up out in Arizona. I'm, I'm coming home tomorrow. Berry's all ready for the winter. I'll be, I'll be here, I'll be back in, in Washington Village where I live, I'll be there till whenever.
Okay, anyone else have anything for George? Thank you for, uh, giving us the information, George. Hope you have, enjoy your stay out there.
Yeah, well, coming to an end. Coming to an end very shortly. I have to come back and, uh, back and take care of the horses. Anyway, I appreciate, uh, being able to use my phone anyway. I thank everybody for their questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you much, Larry, and I'll see you later. Take care.
Good, thanks.
Thanks, George.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
So, I mean, maybe that's a discussion we need to have if we're working on budgets. Do we want more? Could I pay more? I mean, the other proposal we got's pretty similar.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be good to discuss and maybe have him here just to, you know, kind of like the questions were asked, how the police, you know, I was kind, that's kind of word in the contract, so the entity agrees that all emergency calls will be directed to the appropriate town's primary law enforcement agency. So, that's in the contract. So, that might be something to discuss with Orange saying, is, uh, VSP really what we want necessarily as our prime? I mean, that, I don't know how to change that, that might be a huge change. Uh, I mean, my history being on Williamstown ambulance, for instance, if we had a domestic violence call, we might be waiting for forty-five minutes because we'd have to wait for two Vermont State Police, uh, depending on where the call was. And, you know, maybe talking to Orange and seeing, can they at least initially respond? So, say, you know, it's a homicide, and, because that's a really bad call, are they maybe able to respond because they're closer? Maybe they have someone, I mean, I can't remember, a guy, they have a guy that lives in Williamstown, maybe he can respond initially, and we can get VSP to take the call over eventually. But that way, we're not delaying. I, again, I don't know how they can actually work. This could be a completely ridiculous concept, but that's how, you know, can they work to-
You can call them anytime you want.
Yeah.
But this, this is about them patrolling Williamstown.
Yeah, I know.
But you can call them anytime you want.
And are they gonna respond though? That's the, call state police, do, time, see who gets there first. Yeah.
Like, George said, you know, there's a dispatching issue, they don't have dispatching at night, he's trying to work through that with Berry City to, to up it, but if they don't have dispatching for midnight-
Yeah, it sounds good that he's talking about Berry City going up to, what'd he say, ten o'clock? Is that accurate? You know what, I think it's unfortunate, everything we know about Orange County, they've had a long, they've had a lot of issues since he became police chief when the last police chief lost during election. That's really what it was. Uh, but I think it would be good to meet with him and just say, you know, maybe throw a couple of, what would happen during this call? For instance, I mean, kind of talking with, again, I apologize, I cannot read, you know, kind of like, you know, if we have a drug deal at the park, you know, that's a realistic thing. I know when I was on Williamstown ambulance, we had quite a few drug overdoses down there. Uh, so, throw that out there. How do we get a police officer in there? How do we, so I think it'd just be a good follow-up.
I know from past experience, not recently, thank goodness, but, um, it is, as people break in their shop, they're trying to call state police, they weren't even interested at all.
Yeah.
Deal with it. Orange County did at least come and look at it.
Yeah.
You know, neither one amounted to nothing, but still. Byron?
I know in the past, and it's been many, many years, I mean, I stayed trooper, invited state, one of the, one of the big, big leagues up at the Berlin barracks now, um, to see if they're available to come and sit. I, I know they're aware of issues, they're not, you know, they're aware of things, but I didn't know if you had questions from them since they are our primary. I mean, I used to sit on the, the board that we don't have anymore, the state police advisory board, but I don't believe that is still going on any longer because now with social media, there's, you can get word out or somebody that there's something going on somewhere. I didn't, you know, touch with lieutenant or somebody at the barracks and see if they could maybe wanna sit. It's a thought.
They were going down home with their neighborhood watch there for a while, a few years back.
That was, yeah, several, several years ago, there was a neighborhood watch.
It's kind of similar.
But members, they tried to start it up.
Yeah.
Didn't pay it out. I remember that, but it's just a thought, I don't know.
Surprisingly, close the numbers are between two, two sheriff departments, so they pretty much run on the same railroad tracks, you would say. It's just a matter, I mean, I just, seems hard for you to fathom Windsor County taking care of us way up here, but they're doing a good job of it, but they maybe-
How much are they gonna charge?
First of all, it's, uh, seventy-five dollars an hour versus sixty-five dollars an hour with Orange County.
And we would get more, more coverage, more?
Well, they did the twenty, thirty, and forty hour.
Oh, they did a breakdown?
He gave me a, a breakdown for, just like Orange County did, I asked for a breakdown for twenty hours a week, thirty hours a week, and forty hours a week.
I wonder if that includes their travel time getting here and going back too?
Yeah.
Good question.
Well, what would it take to go to somehow find a dispatch, way to dispatch overnight by through Berry City or somebody, uh, by whoever dispatches, uh, so that they could have coverage later at night in an odd hour when a lot of this stuff is going down? Because these people that are violating all this know one hour, there is no coverage. So, maybe it's gonna be mixed up a little bit. If we could find, somehow find a way to get dispatch coverage so these officers aren't out alone on their own, because that's a very dangerous situation for them as well, and we don't want to put anybody in that situation. But there must be a way through somebody to get dispatching of some sort so that we have the coverage at different hours. Because that, that's what it really needs, because everybody knows what time they're out there. And they're just sitting tight till nobody's there.
No, it's because they don't get up all day. They're up all night. They don't go to sleep, they sleep all day and then they're up all night.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
But we all know, everybody in this room sitting here knows where the problem spots are.
Absolutely.
They're, the state police is pecking away at them, maybe not as fast as we would like. We all know what Rodney's talking about on his road.
Yeah.
Then the judicial sits them, lets them write back in a few hours.
Exactly, and that's the other problem is, which I don't believe as a group here in this town, we can fix, but I've talked to state troopers a couple of different times over the last six, eight months, and they can arrest these guys, and if they arrest them before noon, chances are a judge is gonna cut loose before the end of the day.
Oh, yeah.
And there's no consequences. Legislature's gonna have to change somehow before anything really realistic is gonna happen of any significance, because as long as they can arrest them, they're wasting their time because they're loose within hours. Now, if they arrest them late in the day, they may not see a judge that day, so they might at least spend the night in jail, maybe. But that's where the problems are.
But I know-
The root of it.
I know for a fact that Russ was well aware- But I know, I know for a fact that Russ was well aware of what was going on up on Route Pond.
Yep.
And he was driving around a lot, and the State Police told him to back off.
I had heard that.
And it wasn't very long after that that they dared to. So like, yeah, yeah, we all want more coverage, but it's not just that problem. I mean, this is across the state.
I got a whole question, total new style. I don't know half this stuff, and I want to know it. I'm trying to learn it, but. I've always been told when I was working in Waterbury, you don't call, in this town with no police department, you don't call nine-one-one, you just call Berry City. Is that what people do?
No, you call nine-one-one.
Probably be my Berry City Dispatch.
Berry City Dispatch.
Yeah, but that would, yeah. And they would tone out whatever.
But that's going to be your fastest, you know, you actually need law enforcement, call that dispatch, go around all of them.
Call nine-one-one, they'll connect you to the closest.
Yeah. They always say, they send an automated line here, and it takes five minutes to get hold anybody.
And thankfully, we haven't, my family hasn't had to, but I mean, I hear the concerns and get it.
It's not just here.
No.
I just got back.
River County State?
Yes.
I just got back from a hunt trip out in the Midwest. We spent one night in, just outside Columbus, Ohio. And that lady in the hotel says, if you get any guns, would you bring them in the hotel? Said we had a lot of problems with break-ins. Sure enough, that night, back window got smashed out of my truck. And they were looking, and there was six vehicles altogether. I was talking to the cop outside next morning. And in fact, I seen him looking at one, had got the back window smashed out of it. He said, I better go check my truck. I went, I said, I only got one more over here. So anyway, he said they'd come in with a large car or whatever, three, four of them jump out. Car leaves, they sneak around, they smack, smash a back window, not the rear window, but the back one, and they slide through that window, and they go through the glove compartment and the console and everything, looking for cash and guns mostly. And exactly, stuff was all torn out of my console and glove compartment and stuff. He says, we take them, he says, you want to sign affidavit? I said, yeah. He says, you want to prosecute it? I said, yeah, but I ain't driving way back out here to go to court over this. And he says, yeah. He says, well, what'll happen? He says, if we catch him? He said, what happens? He said, that car will swing back to pick him up, and they'll be, they'll be chasing, and they'll be jumping out of the cars here and there, side streets running off. First you know the car's gone, and if we catch them, bring them to court. Six hours later, they're up on the street doing the same thing all over again. He says, it's just, he says, we get wet.
No coffee question. Get ahold of, get ahold of the representatives.
I don't know. Whether it boils down to whether we go, no matter who we go with, we want more coverage, we're going to pay more money. It's just, both contracts are almost identical.
It may happen.
What's that?
It may happen, pay more money. We don't want to, but it may happen.
What's?
Money from tires.
The taxpayers love with us. I mean, would you pay more to get more? It's been at seventy thousand for a long time.
Fourteen years.
Is it that long?
Can we even get more though? Without the dispatch later at night, at most, if it gets to ten o'clock, that's the latest they can do. I don't think Windsor County would be any better, right? If they can't get it, then Windsor County probably wouldn't be as sure.
Well, a lot of that has to do with Windsor County doesn't have the manpower to dispatch, to have their officers up here covering our area, where along with the mountains that they have. This has already been checked into and investigated. The numbers aren't there. It's not just Orange County trying to come back from the crap that they went through, went. Bill West, it's everywhere. It's not just one sheriff's department. So that's not the only option, is it? Because we're sticking with Chelsea because they're local or they're good guys. It's everywhere.
I just meant as far as the dispatch issue, whether it's Windsor or Orange County.
Well, that's something that's going to be addressed and figured out too.
Is there anything we can do?
I think they have to, they have to contract with Berry City for dispatching, or if they're going to be up in this area. But like, George is trying to contract with them to increase coverage over here. Windsor would have to do the same thing.
But is that like, when they call, it's like, it's not because they need a tower, it's just because they need an actual person to run dispatch?
Well, no, the radio frequency, Windsor County is on a, is on a Malhollis frequency. So if they came here and contracted with Williamstown, they would have to contract with somebody local, like Berry City, in order to do their dispatching for them while they're over here in the area.
Like George said, there's a lot of things you'd like to do to better the department, but until it gets contracts in hand, it's hard for them to do much. No different than any other business.
Yeah, when the side judge pulled everything back to their bare bones, statutory, state statutes, requirements of what they, they cover at a sheriff's department, you know, up until George took over, they were covering a lot that wasn't under the set. Orange County itself was covering a lot more for the Orange County Sheriff's Department. And the two side judges, you know, pulled in the reins and cut off all of those additional fur strings, so.
You think they didn't reduce county news any?
No, actually not.
I didn't know if he said, hey, we have a tower, do you need to stick something on it that's going to help this dispatch issue?
Yeah, well, George, they are.
Yeah, I thought you just mentioned it, right?
They're, he's putting something up on Tower. Yeah, he said Grandville Road, but technically he's in Williamstown.
Okay, okay, that's, yeah.
On Tower over there. So, I mean, he's working on the dispatch and for better coverage over here. But he can't build up his police force without contracts because that's what pays for it.
I was reading the letter, email back and forth between Jackie and Chris Weiler, who are your town's manager. We were talking about maybe doing similar to land ambulance or police. And he said, they're probably having now that, they had, had time getting officers because they won't go if they're going to be out there alone. They want to have a two, two-man deal or, I don't want nothing to do with it. Those things that get gotten bad with all the drugs and stuff. So that ain't going to help the situation. I think it means far as cost wise goes. Especially if you're out in the back roads up here, nothing around, and can't get, can't even contact anybody. It's pretty hard to ask somebody to go out there and do that. Anyway, so we're not done with the budget yet, so.
No, we've got to schedule another meeting.
Everybody in the room willing to pay more to get more?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't think it's an option.
Yeah, I'm going to say I don't think that's not an option.
Pretty much.
I mean, presence is good, but not if there's this happening and it's not being dealt with, so.
I think maybe if we bumped it up to the thirty hour for this year, try that, see how that works. It'll be half against what we got now.
Was thirty hours an option?
Yeah, I think it was like a hundred and, I think I figured it out to a.
Oh, okay. Okay, let's see the forty.
You can freeze it for one year.
Yeah, you have the twenty.
That's a hundred and one thousand four dollars. So that's another thirty-one thousand.
So basically, you have to get what you're paying now. You have to get more coverage.
Yeah, you're getting another ten hours a week at thirty. Then I think it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand for forty hours.
Depends on how much you want, but if they don't have the dispatch to protect them at the odd hours, it's going to be hard to make a meaningful difference.
Not being able to get anything, you know, beyond ten o'clock at night.
If you can even get that.
Yeah, I mean, that's what he's working on with Berry City Council right now.
So what's, what's people's thoughts? Do they try that next level of service, see how it works?
Might worthwhile to try it. So I would agree with that, that if you're going to stick with Orange County, you're going to have to guarantee that they're going to be able to provide that extra hour.
Sounds like they're in better shape than we were last year for sure.
We're not a charity. And El Cantos got in a raw deal. I understand that. But I don't think it's up to us to bail them out. So if you, if he can, you know, assure us that he can provide more service to Williamstown, then I'm all for it, but.
So we got six months to, that's what we have to do.
I think we should get George here when he's back in Vermont and to come and sit in.
Well, what can we schedule the budget meeting? Because we need to have our final budget meeting in December. So your options are?
Why don't you talk to George when he gets back and tell him to try to expedite that contract deal with Berry City, to see if he's got, if he can get it or not. If he knows he can get it, then he'll feel more comfortable, looks. Because we have, it seems that.
And that one guy from Corinth, right? If, if we say, hey, we're willing to bump you up to thirty, if you can assure us that we can get to ten o'clock and get this guy here.
Well, the guy that's with St. John's Berry right now is our deputy that we used to have, Laura's husband.
Not the guy who gives the hell in the parking lot?
No, he's gone. That's our guy. He's gone. He's gone.
Okay.
Completely gone. No, no, this, this guy used to work for, when, when Bill Bonyak was, was the sheriff. And he was one of our deputies that was over here quite frequently. And that's the one he's talking about. That's currently working for St. John's Berry and wants to come back, but he needs to make sure that he's got the contract to bring him back. And he was very good to work with.
Yeah, Kevin.
Kevin was great.
Yes, for you?
Um, just thinking of the neighborhood watch, like, if we were to get that restarted again, what would that look like?
First, you'd have to get somebody to get it started. I know the State Police are very involved with it. Byron probably know more about it. She was on the committee.
It, it's a step, it's a separate kind of like program. And I think Shelley Messier, she tried to do it one year to get it going again. And it's a separate program. It's part of the State Police, but you're on paneling on your own. You've got to get signs, you have to post signs up. Yeah. It would, it would be something to contact the State Police, I think. But it, it is a program that is separate, but you're, you're basically on your own. You have to get signs. And I remember when Shelley tried it, she set up a booth outside to have a meeting and to get donations and everything. It never, it never worked through.
Not for support or.
Right.
Because there is, they really have no power.
No, exactly. It's just keeping your eye on that.
And by the time they see something and get somebody here, it's too late to do anything about it anymore.
That is correct.
What I see happening, if something doesn't change, and someone will like it, someone will, is.
Martial law.
Things are going to go back to either martial law or people taking more into their own hands. Because they're getting sick of this, of what's happened.
I need a lot of definitely.
And I had people in my driveway, even though it was posted, and migrants can vouch for this, walk right by the signs and keep right on going. By the time he got over me, he got down there, he went back to his house, which is a couple hundred feet away, and come back up, individual, individual was gone, and they see the same individual again this, this last summer. And at another neighbor's place. And, you know, things are going to get scary if something doesn't happen. I don't know what that all the plans are going to be, but I know what my response is going to be if I catch them up on it. Because, you know, I'm not going to tolerate somebody coming into my house. That's if the dogs don't get them first. And I'm telling you, if you got ninety pounds of pit mix and another dog that's not real fond of strangers, somebody's probably going to get hurt. And the only way they're going to get through is to hurt the dog, and then they're going to deal with me. I like that. But I can see that coming in more than my area. I can see that coming in the whole downtown. I've talked with an awful lot of people.
We know everybody, direction people want to go. We have another persons waiting for us to call into him for another situation, so.
Something's got to happen.
Well, we're working on it.
I, I know. It's not anybody's individual fault. I understand that. But something has got to happen somehow. If it's going to get nasty, if it keeps continuing.
Problem's also already had.
But it does get expensive, it is a lot. I mean, that's not a secret.
Nothing's free anymore. Whenever you used to be able to get free water.
That don't happen, that.
Hey, guys, Vanessa, always hang around for a minute.
Look down.
We just got a, it's nothing, it's nothing that needs to be insect obsession. There's nothing, but it's going to be a surprise for somebody, but we need, I just need everybody to be agreeing with it.
Okay. Nice to have a little bit of a heads up.
I think it would be nice to have a phone number, all myself.
I told you, I can't check the rest of you guys. I have a better time right now. Got you here.
Right.
I feel like musical phones.
What are you doing?
Well, he, I gave out my cell phone number so he would recognize it when I called, and I called from the landline, and he's not going to, he's not answering his phone.
But could have been a wife answering.
I don't know.
No, nobody called, nobody answered.
It's okay. Jackie didn't answer my calls earlier.
He's not answering his phone.
Barb, just let somebody know I'm going to.
Hey, Andres, it's Jackie. Trying to reach you for the select board meeting.
How we got in bed? It's never that bad. No, it's fine.
What does a BMP stand for? Where's BMP stand for?
Huh?
What does BMP stand for? Treated by BMPs. You know what BMP stands for? That's my.
BMP? Nope, I don't. Larry, what does BMP stand for? Do you know? BMP. What does it stand for?
That's what they're trying to do.
He's just asking, said, I don't know. Treated by BMPs. What the hell are BMPs?
You know, what does BMP stand for?
I don't, I don't know what you're talking about.
On a map, it says.
Something treated by BMPs. What is BMP?
That we don't know.
I don't know. You also do?
I have a feeling that's what they're trying to do.
Treated by BMP. Oh, I've got a question to ask when he calls me. If I can get him to answer soon.
Sheriff's week confirmed.
Best management practice.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, that's through the US Forest Service.
That makes, I think that's best manager to practice. That, that sounds at least logical. Could, they could be wrong, but I would.
BMP, best management practice.
Yeah, I should have thought of that. Google. I Google everything.
Best management practice.
I'm going to locate myself here.
Seth. You're Seth, right? You're never destroyed. How do we get ahold of them? We've tried to, tried to reach them.
I've tried to let them know that you go to.
Dollar game.
That was all friendly. No, it's all friendly.
Okay, that doesn't, that's.
Well, that's Larry's.
And I was on his door for ten minutes this morning and on Friday, and I finally, we posted a copy of the map with my phone number saying, please call the town manager.
Yeah, they, I know they communicated to me, like, they, I guess, I mean, admittedly, I'm learning this too, this whole Vermont town. And you gotta look at the post things, and because you go online.
What the hell they wanna do there?
There's not much there, I don't know, I think they're probably.
Definitely.
Sir, well, they were.
Well, it's mandatory, it's a three acre stormwater permitting with the state records.
They thought they had someone to call them or something, or something in the mail, and I told them, they're just trying to get verbal.
So we have two three acre parcels, one industry street, or two more sports center.
Okay, that, that was discussed earlier, I guess we're trying to put it back within.
They're just trying to get like verbal, I told our neighbors, uh, you guys just need a verb, basically, to start the thing going. And I said, yeah, I told Larry, the other, um, just knock on the door, solve that, use a napkin. And then, I mean, he works and, um.
Yeah, that's his mom.
Okay, and the other, I'm gonna email them.
You shoot.
He works now, and, and.
I can write it down now.
So, her time, when it flooded, it was all bad.
Watch that.
When it flooded, it was deep, where the rivers, they were actually.
Oh, yeah.
I know, I, now, I.
Yeah, I am, I'm always.
Yeah, I wanna go, but I figure out how we're now.
I mean, it's gonna take a lot of water, we should go, a lot of passing, and then.
Oh, that day, when, like, two years ago, it was.
Oh, the water was across Route fourteen, both sides.
Oh, yeah.
I know they just, I know they just dredged it, but I don't think what you've seen, you're kind of, was on the corner behind that tow place there, in front of that. It's not gonna take much.
They're getting flooded?
I know, well, I mean, on the other side of Route fourteen, where that little house is.
The stream is basically, you know, maybe a foot.
Yeah.
I mean, it's completely filled, like dirt is filled up, and I feel that. Like where the, the guy has a horse, I mean, all cows, right?
Yeah, I don't know if he's still. Oh, right, right, yeah.
It's basically right across from industrial.
Uh huh.
By the, the pond.
Yeah, actually, I, I think, I think, uh, Logan Spencer actually owns that ha, that property, he has a trailer up on top, he owns that house too. I think he rents it.
I have the same name, doesn't ring a bell, I'm in this home.
Andy, well, Andy was his grandfather, listened to him.
Hello?
And I think it doesn't ring a bell, but.
No. Hello?
Well, it looks like you're halfway.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
So can we, can we schedule a budget meeting now?
Definitely.
So it's either gonna be the sixteenth or the twentieth? Sixteenth, by next Monday?
Next Monday is the sixteenth, now there's the twenty third.
Twenty third or the thirtieth. We have three more Mondays.
Sixteenth is probably better than twenty third, I agree.
Yeah.
Or do you wanna do the thirtieth?
No. That, 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 right in the middle of Christmas and, and I don't have any holidays off, but I mean, there, a lot of people may or may not be in town for that. Sixteen.
Hello? Aye, okay, that's okay, I'm gonna put you on speaker. Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you well.
Okay.
Hey, Andreas, this is Larry.
Hey, Larry, sorry to make you guys waiting, uh, wait, sorry about that.
I'm just gonna let, let the public know what this is all about. This, uh, conversation is regard to stormwater management plans that the state's requiring all the towns to do for any developed areas of town. And this is, just pertains to the business center road area for now, right? Are you all about?
Correct.
You got other areas you're looking at too, right?
Yeah, well, we're gonna get the commercial center as well.
Yep, yep. Okay, so, go ahead with what you got, and I'll see if anybody's gonna, anybody's got any questions.
Great, so just to give everybody kind of the overview, um, you know, the three acre program was started because essentially the state is trying to regulate all these larger impervious surfaces to control, um, to meet the phosphorus control requirements. It all ties, goes back to Lake Champlain. And, uh, because of that, the state kind of proposed this new regulation on impervious surfaces, which are greater than three acres. Um, and in particular, like the business center and the commercial center had previous stormwater permits that go back, um, you know, a number of years. And because of that, the state, uh, originally wrote those permits for, you know, three acres or more of impervious surface. And because of that, now that those are expiring, especially now the state is requiring those sites to have upgraded stormwater systems. Um, and so that all started basically in twenty twenty, and there's kind of a, a timeline depending on where you are located geographically in the Lake Champlain watershed. And so right now, we're working with the town, basically, to, to try to figure out, you know, the best solutions to upgrade each one of these sites. And the town, um, you know, the state has provided some financial assistance. And we helped the town, basically, apply for this grant, it's called a POA grant. And the POA grant is, uh, thirty, thirty thousand dollars worth of engineering fees. And then another nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars of, um, the permitting fees that you would otherwise have to pay to the state. So the town was successful in getting those grant funds for, for each of the sites, the business center and the commercial center. And, uh, so right now, you know, the work that we're doing on behalf of the town is gonna be mostly reimbursable through that grant. Uh, so we're gonna, you know, assist the town when the time comes to apply for reimbursement through the state. So that's kind of like the general overview, I'm happy to kind of give, you know, a little more in-depth discussion of what we've done. We're a little further ahead on the business center, um, and the commercial center. Uh, but I'm happy to kind of give an overview of, um, kind of where we're at.
Okay, well, we are looking at your plan here, and everybody's wondering what BMP stands for.
Yeah, we'll start there. So BMP stands for best management practice.
Yeah.
And so, so what that means is that we have a stormwater improvement practice proposed for that area. So we're looking at, uh, and the, and for the business center, we're looking at a couple key spots where throughout work so far, we've identified these areas where it's most cost effective to do some type of a stormwater practice. And so I can kind of describe as the board, others are looking at the map that I provided. Essentially, one of the areas is right along Route fourteen. And so there's an area there where we've identified some grassy spot where we could do basically just an infiltration chamber to put the stormwater back in the ground. And so we're looking at that spot, we're looking at another spot, um, kind of in front of the haunted pantry, um, and the bar, kind of right the, the adjacent property there, right on the edge of the parking lot. And then down at the, um, the residential unit down the park. So the other, the, in front of the bar would be the, another chamber system, it'd be underground, you wouldn't necessarily see anything. And then down at the residential units would be more of a planted rain garden type feature, so it'd be like a little depression with plants. And so we picked those three areas, you know, based on, we did soil testing, uh, soil borings earlier this fall. And, you know, characterized the soils, and then we've done some design work so far to figure out, you know, how about to do this? And all that is kind of required in terms of like what the state requires, they require us to kind of fully characterize the site. We had to survey the site, we had to do the soils work, and then do, kind of, the, the size and using, using models to figure out, um, you know, how big these need to be, where they need to be, et cetera. And so we're to the point now where we're about ready to have a plan that can be circulated around to the town. And, you know, kind of get some feedback in terms of what people think about the plan. And once we have that, we'll be able to finalize the plan. And then we'll be ready to actually submit an application, uh, to the state. And kind of what happens, once we submit the application, um, basically there'll be, you know, a period of probably six months where the state reviews the application. And, you know, they'll, they'll issue technical comments and stuff, they'll go through a technical review. But then, once they approve it, they'll issue the town a permit. And that permit will be good for five years. And, uh, at the end of the five year period, the town will have to construct the, the project. So the project that we have, these three different features, won't need to be constructed right away. There, it, it will have, it will need to happen within five years. And the state has been saying all along that they do plan to provide construction assistance in terms of new grants, uh, for construction. Um, but I haven't seen anything yet, but that is something that they, it's just one of them saying. So, you know, I would expect there'd be some grant program eventually for construction.
I know there used to be some when I was under regional planning commission for those rain gardens and stuff, I know they did a couple in Northfield. Back there about ten years ago or so. So it's been, those, those type of situations have been around for a while.
Yeah, they do, and then, you know, the, these programs kind of come and go, but they, you know, this is, this program is like very far reaching. Um, so I think it's important for people to understand, there's, I think there's like eight hundred regulated, um, properties right now. So there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of different, not just, you know, commercial, industrial types, a lot of residential subdivisions, um, all over, you know, the, the states that are regulating this program, so they have a lot of different people looking for funding. So I think it is a really high priority for the state to try to figure, figure out how to get people from the system. You know, once they actually have to come to construction, because obviously the construction part of it is the more expensive part.
Anyone have any questions for Andreas?
Like you said, I hope there's funding for, like, I think that's the base thing. Cause how much are we anticipating on paying for this?
I don't know yet, no, no one plans for it.
It depends on the design.
Okay.
Fortunately, a lot, let's just put it that way.
Typical state, you know, they make all these laws and stuff, but no money to go with.
No money to, yeah, unfunded mandates, so.
All this, all this impervious space is regulated, but through all these extra things, are they considered impervious space? Like, so, um, solar panel, tower, fields, that's all impervious, wind towers, that's impervious? I mean, what?
Gravel roads impervious.
Well, not.
Gravel roads impervious.
Not as impervious, but yeah, granite is pretty.
Fancy it isn't got grass growing on it, it's pretty much all in it, doesn't it, Andreas?
Yeah, can you repeat, can you say that again, Larry?
He was wondering what was considered to be impervious, is pretty much, pretty much everything doesn't have grass, uh?
Yeah, that's right, um, yeah, the state considers gravel, gravel roads, gravel parking lots, um, impervious, yeah, so.
Driveways, roofs, you roofs on your houses, everything, so.
So they, what, there's, they wanna make more spaces regulated like that, is that?
They're trying, what they're trying to do is to filter the water, basically, for lack of better words. Before it goes into the streams, ends up in Lake Champlain.
What about this old dredging stuff that I heard, that they used to do, that they stopped doing?
Those days are gone, I'm surprised we got, got to do it this year, but, so.
Jumped through a lot of hoops to do it.
Yeah, the old days, the way you're doing things gets you in trouble nowadays.
Let's go back to the old way, can't we?
Yeah, it's.
It wasn't really terrible.
Go ahead, Andreas.
Well, I was just gonna stress that, you know, it's, it's, uh, the, the regulation is really water quality focused. So it's not necessarily, you know, where you might expect there, you know, to be a lot of flow and flooding. You know, from these recent floods, you know, it's really just these smaller storms, you know, cleaning that water, so removing the phosphorus. So it's really focused on, um, kind of these smaller rainfall events. And I think that that's why a lot of people are a little bit surprised that they need to, you know, get covered under this because they say, you know, we haven't seen, you know, there's never any, any flooding here, there's no erosion, you know, we don't have any issues with stormwater. You know, it's the kind of thing that we, we hear, but it's, it's all related to like these, you know, the more of the smaller flows, you know? So that's why, um, you know, we have to kind of regulate it, even in the case where it's, it's kind of, um, you know, not necessarily like a big issue. Um, like at the, you know, the business center, the commercial center, it's relatively flat, there isn't a lot of stormwater flow, but it's still is regulated because it has this impervious footprint.
Basically, it's, Antinans, Antinans had an active fifty permit for the most part, isn't it?
Uh, is it, do you say it was, it's required because of the active fifty permit?
Mostly, from what I've seen so far, is projects that's had an active fifty permit.
Yep.
Targeting first. That's what I've seen, versus straight on municipalities, you know?
I mean, the active, well, yeah, I mean, the, the, the timeline that the state has is not necessarily related to act two fifty. It's really related to where you are within the Lake Champlain watershed, and to some extent, the, you know, and you guys are kind of first on board, this, this regulation hasn't even hit the, the southern part of the state or anybody in the Connecticut River watershed yet. But they're gonna, they're gonna be facing the same thing like ten years down the road, but the state has, um, staggered the timeline such that, um, you know, all of us within the Lake Champlain watershed are first. But, but act two fifty definitely comes into play because whatever we do in the commercial center or the business center, you know, because there's an act two fifty permit, uh, that, that does require that that permit is amended. Um, because the stormwater system is being upgraded. And what I've seen so far is that it's really not a big, a big effort to do it, but it, it requires generally like a minor amendment to the existing permit. Um, so, you know, there's other permits, the problem, and this is like with the state, you know, this is all new. So the state's trying to kind of figure this out as they go, but, um, because of the implications of upgrading the stormwater system, you know, it might trigger other things like an act two fifty amendment or, you know, a well impairment or anything like that. So like what we're trying to do with our design is to kind of navigate around that the best we can and make it as simple and cost effective and not trigger the need, you know, to go through other permitting processes if we can help it. So that's why we've kind of, with our design, we're trying to stay within the right of way as best we can and keep it, um, you know, so it's not, it's gonna be triggering other needs like that, because what we see on some of these other sites is it really becomes kind of a can of worms where you start, you know, messing with the stormwater system, then you're into things like, you know, wetland permitting or something like that. So we're trying to avoid that.
Anyone have any questions for Andreas?
I was just gonna ask one question, so, once these are made, is it going to be like a lifelong thing? You know, are these things gonna have to be reviewed every so many years, or hopefully this is kind of like the big plan? Is that accurate, or we have to keep reassessing something every so often?
Was it every ten years? So. Yeah, the hope, the hope is that, you know, once this is done and the state issues the permit, um, there really won't need to be any, any new modifications for like, you know, several years. The reality is that the, the permit term is just five years. And so I think that the state does have the ability to like, change the, change the rules, you know, after the permit expires. They could potentially open up some new rules, um, and require. you know, additional things, but I think the more likely thing is that, and this is what I've heard from the state, um, is that basically what the state is gonna do is they're gonna, right now, they're picking on the, you know, the three acre sites. They've gotten all those sites that are three acres or more of impervious surface, and eventually they're gonna, you know, go down to two acres if they need to. And it's all about demonstrating whether they can meet their targets that they've, you know, given to EPA in terms of, um, controlling the phosphorus runoff into the lake. If they can meet their targets with the three acre, they might not need to go down any further, but I think that's the more likely thing, is that in the future, there'll be other smaller parcels that will be, you know, regulated under the same program versus, you know, the state coming back to like a three acre site and saying, oh, you know, you, you now need new more. I don't think that that's as likely.
Thank you.
I guess we're all set for now, thanks for, uh.
Okay.
Like this, on this stuff.
Yeah, absolutely, and, um, you guys, uh, you know, definitely let me know if you have any other questions. Uh, you can kind of, afterward, I can respond.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right.
It's Andreas.
Good night.
Okay. You have no other business?
No, can we just get back, so twelve sixteen, budget meeting? We're not getting out of here without screaming.
What day is that on?
Next Monday?
Next Monday at six?
At six, okay.
Did you drive?
I can't guarantee nothing. Not this time of year.
Here, here. Okay.
Here at six, next Monday. They'll have you. I, I was, I came from, uh, Bellasol. I was, I, I run out of how much of my salt and stuff, got a rock and hand, we get a shed there. Oh, yeah. Yeah. I was down there and they asked me to run another load, go back, open up everything I had locked up, grab the load and bring it to the town of Weathersfield. I said, sure, have them ready. They had the pit open, and, and so I closed it all up for them.
You're not finding out a lot.
Okay, so, well, you're all set now, around the table, Kylie, Evan, Scott?
I'm good.
Clayton, I have nothing. Was your buddy Merry Christmas, I guess?
I'll just wait till afterwards, I wanted to ask you something.
Uh, Jake, you have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll sign that.
Motion made second, any discussion or favor?
I'll wait.